Well, when the required we're going to place that's why it makes sense for Charlie to be the R A O. Because he's aware of what each department does and he knows which department will produce which record.
That's why we did it that way.
Both side of those were typical ones. I mean Jim doesn't call the office up and use a copy of building records. Somebody wants the status of the tax bill or what's the bill history for instance.
So I know like in Plymouth they do a folder or like a three ring binder. That would be out in like every department like say there was one in building or you know wherever. And people would come in write their name, what their record request was, their email address. Now there there are a lot more electronic than we are here. So there it's pretty simple like you go to the board of health, you ask for something, they email it to you within a certain time period. That way nobody's really talking to anybody. At the end of the day you look at your log and anyone put over question with this or that or.
You're saying like one book for like the whole town?
No, for each department. So if they want a building and someone wants a copy of a building permit or whatever like Charlie keeps saying. You put your name, your email address, your contact info. And then they would either print it and call the secretary or whoever when it's full. Um so every department had their own way of doing that. I think this got brought up because the type of records request it was involved all different departments. I think that is really the bigger. I don't think you guys have a problem with doing your record request for individual departments. I think this is a different animal.
I was wondering about that. That's what I wondered.
Yeah, I think that's what's different in all.
So it's.
The level of of records request makes a difference. Someone comes in wants copy of a building permit, that's really not a big deal.
Not what one's filing, I didn't ask for emails for a year.
Someone goes in and calls or who's you permitted um you know subject pumppers, that's not a big deal. That's you know all that stuff's public information.
Right.
Um and those are things that probably handles within the first five minutes that person walks in and asks for. We're also one of hall effects where a lot of things, a lot of people don't do things electronically. They're still coming in and want to come in in person and go into a department, ask for a copy of something and get it, walk away with it. So if we have to start keeping track of everything, all of that, it just creates more paperwork. And a lot of it isn't something that's you know, is there a reason to keep a record about that?
I don't think it hurts to keep a record of anything you do.
Well, I think that's why Plymouth does that real book because it's literally like date.
Yeah.
And then you file it away, you put the binder up there, you start a new one when it's full for the year. And then you know if someone came in to Sue and said, hey, do you know if anybody came in or do you have this? She could pull the book down and say, well, August of this, these were my requests and this is who asked for what.
This was out of a litigation contest. Someone has to have his lawsuits. They have sent not the usual, they didn't get caught with one little document.
Right, and I think there's a different level. There's the the public records request that could come back and bite us. And then there's the ones where they just come in, you know, it's.
Right.
I mean, I know sometimes it's hard to know which one is which. But in most cases, I think that most of the departments are not dealing with that.
Alright, I feel like in the cases of those big records that we're talking about, we have Caesar. Caesar can literally pull emails and put them on file and make it so that you know Sue's not chasing. People looking for, hey, can you send me these emails? Can you send me these emails? Plus it holds everybody accountable because then nobody's gonna accidentally leave emails out. So I feel like in a big public record request like that, like we were just talking about where they come in and they want all correspondence between these people. You can pull that correct? Pretty quickly.
Yeah, usually.
And nothing needs to be chased and you can download it to whatever or put it on a drive.
Can I ask if someone is going into my emails and pulling my emails that at least I'm notifying them?
We the town does not have to notify any other.
I I'm not asking, I'm not saying that the town has to Caesar. I'm asking if I could do it.
I I don't think.
Is there a problem with notifying, you know, we're we're doing this public records request. This was what was asked of us for pulling the off your emails. Just a little notification to present. Is that that's a courtesy on a law.
I just feel like if we do it for one for one instance, we have to do it for all and all that's necessary.
Oh, I see. That's that's what I would expect.
Right, but we use we use town emails. So at any time, all of our emails are public records and.
Yeah. We understand that.
Well, not all of our records.
But we understand that.
Well, there are a number of circumstances, exclusions that all would have better idea of what information is even emailed. Without just including the issues. So I.
Yeah, so let me just interject at that point. The way many towns do it is if somebody's looking for all correspondence between between A, person A and person B. You're the one that produces it, not A or B. Cause they're busy or they're volunteers or whatever. But when you develop that that result, you don't turn it over just that way.
No, normally you would have to go to a town council for review and redaction.
You need to review it because there's a lot of stuff in there that's private to somebody. Maybe you know personal information.
Every time or is that just if it's in the litigation?
I I would say any large amount of emails being pulled and reviewed.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we need to do that for a building permit, but again, we're off of that topic. We're going to public records that we would have to decide how many pages or what the situation of what the department is.
Right, but I don't want someone going into my and pulling my emails and not letting me know that that's happening to me. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean that to me is common courtesy. I understand that my emails on town email are public information. But I would still appreciate the notification.
So is there a way, what's the proper way to do that?
So what I'm asking is that Caesar won't go into my email without telling me.
I'm asking that also.
So what's the what's the way that that handled in other towns?
Well, there is so there's assess that. In your hometown, people were deleting emails. So the idea was do it first and then tell later. So the emails wouldn't be deleted. They wouldn't have to try and reconstruct the deleted emails. Even emails that are deleted tend to retrieve.
Right, I have no problem with them doing it later. I just think it's common courtesy to notify people that you're in their computer. You're in their files.
He's not, he wouldn't be in your computer. I mean, it would be a search of the server.
But still, he sent under my email address. Right?
No, I I would not.
Charlie have to have a pass in to.
No, I'm not going to have your email.
I would not be logging in as you. If I would, the the system we have archives every email. I can see the message, the attachments.
I still think that you know five people. That's common courtesy.
I I I don't I don't see a problem with that. I just wanna be. I don't want people thinking that you know this is getting into something else, but if we're investigating something, we're not gonna. You know, we don't wanna be expected to give that courtesy.
Which is falls under a different situation under both the community law and public records.
So as long as it's established.
Under the investigation, you're not dealing with public records requests.
So say somebody asks for all my emails or all the department heads. Or all my emails, then you're all on that email chain.
No, if someone.
So then you wanna be notified.
This is this is what I'm saying. If someone asks for all of your emails. Rather than Caesar just going in and pulling up all your emails and turning them over to the attorney and turning them over to someone else. That he let you know that he had he has done this.
But you'd be included in that in the that service.
And what I'm saying is if if you're right in my emails, do you wanna be notified too? Cause it could be.
Well, they're email. Well, I mean, I don't know. I I guess if I'm responding to you. But what I'm saying is you don't want him in your pulling your emails without letting you know, do you?
I don't know that I have anything to do with whether or not he does it or not. I I don't think.
I just think that it's common courtesy.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Your moral is asking if there's a public records request on you.
Yeah.
But like you know, but so say somebody wanted my email and I had responded to you about something about whatever. You don't care about that. You just wanna know if there's a public records request on you.
Yeah.
I think that's fair. I think people should be alerted if there's a public records request.
I think it's gonna go, I mean, I I think it's gonna get a little. I mean, I have the big group of emails. I might as well just sound on a blast email included or not in the request.
For doing a public records request. Well, no, Sandy, you said that that's not what she's asking.
You know, and and your email may be.
So if there was a records request on me, you wouldn't alert Sandy. She's saying if there was a records request on her.
I know, but people aren't submitting records requests. Usually on one person. There will be the for a group of people.
Well, that's a lot now. That's why they are.
But if but she but she just just said if she wanted, if you responded, then sure, I wanna be notified. So if.
I said sure. I said I didn't know. I I truly Caesar, it's just. It's a matter of courtesy. Just don't go and pull people's stuff without telling them. Alright, so if you're pulling Ashley's emails, who let Ashley know?
Right, but if my email to you is his question.
It doesn't. Yeah. But that's yeah.
It shouldn't let you know too, cause what his question is.
So but if we if if we had a log of one of the public records requests, then everybody could check the log.
And I suppose check a log weekly to know that.
And then there's no. I I guess, yeah.
And just to be clear, Caesar's not going in anyone's computers and emails. He's doing a search that would have, for instance, my name and it would just pop up if I had an email thread with any of you.
Ms. Paul, do you have a policy that you can refer to us to vote on?
Right.
Yeah. From another town or?
I'm not aware of towns directing formal policies on public records, but I can I can see if I can find them.
Okay.
So I I.
People were talking about this eight person.
Yep, I think it should be each department. I don't see a problem with the notebooks. I don't know if you guys have a problem with that. But if you have a three ring binder that just has blank pages and someone comes in for a public records request, that's gonna take more than a, hey, do you have a building permit? You can say yes, can you?
Well, maybe we all have a.
Or even with the building permit, everyone should put it in a log.
Maybe we all have like the same form.
Yes.
Right, so we'll get a form or and on the top yours will say town clerk, yours will say accessories, building, whatever. And when someone comes in and say, yes, can you please sign the log? If it's something you can do now, great. If not, we'll put somewhere on there that we have the ten days, whatever, you'll be in contact. Or a secretary or an assistant will be in contact as you have it. Then at the end of the year, we create the books and file them all in each department.
I'm gonna say only ask for not believing this.
Right.
And you get written in yourself.
Write it in yourself.
Though sometime you may, that person does not actually have to identify themselves.
I was just gonna answer that, yeah.
Awesome. So you just.
I'm not.
A person.
I'm not. That sounds more.
Reasonable. And then if these big ones come in that we are talking about, I think they should be referred to Caesar who can just do a search.
Or say their email searches or.
If they're email searches.
If they're document searches, that should still go to the department.
If they're.
Yeah, cause that could be paper or whatever.
I don't, I know it will help out each department individually if they request it obviously with any digital files and stuff, but. Emails, I can pull thousands of them in minutes versus someone going on their Outlook and pulling whatever they have from the past year and then printing it out.
That because right time concern on a big burden on town employees and volunteers. Have to go through, do it themselves, find their emails. So partly this is a way to make it easier for everybody.
Does the board want the log?
Well, so if there's if there's a request for emails, it should go uh go through in there.
It should go to the department, then the department would just pull, you know, let them know what they need. So the department gets someone requesting follow my emails and so and so's emails from this time to this time. Their request, in my opinion, should come from that department. And then I would send my results to town council for redaction and then he can either deliver the deliverables or he can send it back.
To the department.
To the department for the deliverable. But I wouldn't be, I don't think I should interact with the public facing portion of it.
No, I don't.
I agree with some of them.
So are you saying that any large requests?
On involving.
Need to.
But we should be charging for some of these too. So we need to make sure, yeah.
No, and I do. I do. But um any large requests that's whether litigation or not be sent to some town council? Or review?
Well, I'll like if somebody requests all of your emails, then you're responding with town council, then or whatever. Somebody needs to review it to make sure that we're.
So loud.
I I wrote I wrote down, we definitely need to have a public records training for all the department heads. Anybody that's filling out. Request needs to have a training done, I would say, we say.
Absolutely.
We are talking to uh. Yeah, about that dude, just mixing it with the open meeting law. Doing a big training.
So I think that that would be not just, you know, department heads, but. Um committee members to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the public records law applies not just to town employees, departments, but also the things like the planning board, you have.
Yes.
Board of Appeals. You have volunteer boards. And they can be buried with public records requests. And that's a complaint that you're often stayed by is that. You know, people volunteer their time to do, they think good things and make their communities better. They spend all their time. Responding to public records requests and then they may lose interest.
So uh.
One of the issues is always getting volunteers to go to the trainings.
Well, I I think for.
Uh because there's been open meeting law trainings and public records trainings available many times. And Charlie always forwards opportunities.
I I think if the board.
And it's always an issue getting them to.
Cause what it says, if you're on on an appointment and you don't attend this training, then you must attend another training.
We're gonna do it here.
So many so many months.
Yeah, something for them.
Got an online training or?
No, we've done it in in house before.
There should be standardized procedures. Like you you are supposed to charge for some public records requests. To do that. You want some kind of threshold, like if it's a, what's a major request? You want a a one page request. Obviously, a one page request, you just wanna do it not charged for by the courtesy to. Everybody. Cause somebody comes in and wants, every document you your department has prepared in the last five years. Before we answer that, it has to be estimated in the central bill, might be twenty thousand dollars. For do five years of every email. And if they wanna pay it, then you give it to them. It's it's there are people out there who do want it. This is. It is not circulate. All kinds of things about about pay, compensation, whatever is paid. What's happened where is.
This state law dictates what we can charge per page and. That would be the lowest lowest paid person in the office, oh, lowest paid person who can do the job. Well, like to to do the job.
But you can always go to the secretary of state and ask for relief from that to charge more if there's a problem.
So I I think right now, as long as every department. Uh I think we need a policy, then voice the talk at the next meeting.
I mean, what are your opinions on doing the books? The book for the law.
Or if you guys wanted to, we already creating a form for the actual requests. We just ask a department. If they get it and writing or whatever, they just can't.
I like the I like the notebook idea better.
It just makes sixteen hours. I mean, they're not throwing stuff at Sue or throwing stuff and at the end of the day they're going, oh my gosh, all this came in. If you turn the page to the next day.
Well, you can do the log, but you can still enter it in. I mean, I don't know if you guys still want to record. And not have to worry about storing paper somewhere.
Log, log, yes.
Give a log, we can do that.
The log is the record.
And then at the end of the year, we pull the binder away and it was that, you know, Tom clerk's this twenty twenty one.
Problem to find.
Yeah, you can scan the binder if you want to.
You can scan it.
We can do that too.
But I I I do like it a paper idea because then when we have someone come in, the person just have to go back and sit at their computer and writing all that stuff. It's just like you, because you can fill it in and.
Where's like Hanover or something, they literally have to have a computer there.
You take more of your right hand.
Where I've had people like watch people, we walk through it and I'm like, oh my gosh, they're paying their account. I'll do that. That's horrible. Because they don't have anything there that they can do paper wise. It's all electronic. So I don't think we're there.
Right.
Are we doing the, are we doing a web form for people to submit if they don't come in for the log? Or are we making people come in, call?
Well, right now we have emails. I mean, people can email us, right?
So right now. Yeah.
So it's somebody here that then we just ask for it on.
Is that what you guys wanna continue doing?
Yeah.
Just add it to log, yeah.
So you guys, no form for anything they are emailing, they're requesting, calling in, or coming in.
Well, I mean, you can you can have a form on the website for somebody to fill out that says, you know, checkpoints. Build building department, accounting department, uh looking for X Y Z.
Yeah, we can add it. I don't know that it's necessary if they can just send it.
No, no, no. I mean, if they're coming in, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So most people come in.
Yeah.
So the anonymous requests usually tend to be by email. They usually create a fake name on on Gmail. And you get this thing from uh Justice for All at Gmail that. Um and then you have ten pages of requests.
Yeah, but then you just you say if there's ten pages of requests, then they come up with a number and tell them, here it is. Give us a check, give them the amount of work and uh make the video show.
Yeah.
And what about the delivery? Are we gonna be asking how they wanna deliver it? Are we gonna do default paper, default digital?
And I think it should be if the if the record is digital, let's send it digital.
Unless they request otherwise.
Yeah.
And then.
If they put it all before.
Right. Not everything.
Yeah. So.
But that could change the cost of the request too. So if someone's asking for five thousand pages and paper versus putting it digitally. And I mean, I think that that's something you're gonna have to put on the the form if you're gonna make a form, you know. Paper copies may cost more than digital depending on the size of the request.
So.
Okay.
So if there's a request for email, then it should go, it should be routed to I T. And I T should respond back with that information to the given department request.
Or depending on the size of the town council.
And and then that department admin's the it either. Be responsible for making sure that the records are actually public records or making sure that it's sent to town council.
So I get a lot of requests from these other departments, so I'll print out. If I forward them the email, I print it out saying that I forwarded this request to department list.
Yeah.
So those town clerks is served as public records access officers. Doesn't actually go to each department and do the everything for the records. Town clerk records access officer model has essentially them being a monitor, a supervisor, and a resource. And a a bird dogger. So public records request. Does somebody watch the public records request? Well, then it's often easier to go to the town clerk. The offices are open, they're there. There's somebody there that can fill out the form. Then the town clerk forwards it to the department, logs it in. That happened on October eighteenth. And then when the person comes in six months later and says, I've never heard anything. You have a record.
But that's right. But that's why I have a record of one idea and I think that if I manage to keep the ball from coming in.
Right. I think that's what it's trying to say.
Yeah, that I, yeah. But I'm.
And that way you can remind them. You can say, hey, it's ten days or so.
See, but I don't think I should have to. If I if I send you it, can you just take care of it?
It's always quite good. Right, you shouldn't have to leave it.
Right, right.
Why don't we review some policies that are up there? Are there any changes today for?
For getting to a meeting.
So I'll go to the next meeting. And then we put on next, we have uh policy for agendas.
They kinda go together with the procedure of the agenda meetings.
Okay.
Paul, this is something that we had talked about. Getting information about the meeting before the meeting.
Yeah, so pretty much the 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 best practices is that there's a select board meeting coming up. Put the supplies to all, all the member boards. So let's say you're having a select board meeting on October eighteenth. Well, you have a date such as Wednesday before in which everything is gonna be discussed at that meeting. Has to be photocopied, prepared, tabulated with proposed motions. Recommendations from the department heads, all that stuff. And given to the select board members so they have the weekend to read it. And so when you have a meeting at nine o'clock in the morning on a Monday morning. You walk in already familiar with everything that the town has on that subject matter. So if. Tricking a bit while I'm attending here, um. National appropriate, so picking this up randomly. So like Wednesday before, you would have here, here's all the papers. And here's the recommendation. So I guess the recommendation from that would come from Charlie and maybe from from me.
Right, that's why they're not kicking it down and saying, well, let's go back and talk to town council or we have the information, we can make the decision and.
We'd have we have a proposed motion. And say, if you approve this, then the proposed motion would be to authorize. I think these cases are on South Carolina or South Carolina. Or this is the attorney general's case. So authorize uh. The town administrator or the town council to modify the attorney general and respond to the paperwork. With an affirmative. Each of these items. I'm trying to pick something that comes from a different department. And so let's say. Just not to pick on the town clerk, but let's say the town clerk wanted something done in her department. But this doesn't just go on the agenda. She prepares a memo saying here's what she wants. Charlie prepares a motion that would say. To grant this request, you need to go perform things. And somewhere in there, this is an analysis of what are the implications? If we do, if we say yes to the town clerk, do does that mean we have to bargain with the union? Do we have to do it for every other department? What's this budgetary impact? All all that kind of stuff all presented to you. So that you already have that information, you know what questions to ask. So if there's a budgetary impact, so let's say, again, not the town clerk's office or anybody in particular. But the town clerk's asked for something. And the estimate is gonna cost ten thousand dollars to to um.
Then they could say, we have that money, we can go over from this line and it will be in the packet or we don't have this money or.
And then. And then you know a question to ask, like where's the money coming from? Is it maybe funded through Harper funds? You can go down that road and kind of figure out. If you have a meaningful discussion, you're not hearing it the first time at the meeting. Cause then essentially you're being ambushed. You walk into a meeting and you don't know the background. So you're not prepared. And so the the voters aren't getting the fully informed. Set of information that everything hasn't done something. But that also means that things don't necessarily go on the first agenda. Cause somebody that goes back to follow the agenda.
So if the packet gets put together Wednesday, something comes in on Thursday, or in this case it would be the packet will be ready Thursday, cause then we can't change it for Monday. Then something comes in Thursday afternoon or Friday, it gets pushed to the next meeting.
It it gets pushed to the next meeting. But even if something comes in before Wednesday, if it's gonna involve a police chief analyzing it, if it's gonna involve the.
The capment looking at it or.
Yeah, the capment to to the. Funding source, Charlie has to do some research, the town council has to do some research. It it may be two or three agendas ahead before you actually put it on. So it's it's what we call ready for prime time. So when agenda item comes up, it's an idea, but it's be ready for prime time. And that means some work needs to be done to assemble the raw information.
Alright, good.
So then now.
You're pretty good. Do it this way, are you?
Well, I just wrote down. So we would basically have an agenda. So what's been happening is we keep bothering Pam and Charlie. Every time we change the agenda, they have to keep posting and then Sue has to post and it's this ripple effect. So. Maybe we have a running list of items for future agenda items in the setup, where we, we assign them.
It's what happens usually is the town administrator maintains a notebook, people come in and say, I, I knew me with Boris Solakman because I've got X. And so you write that into the notebook. And then, there's a list of maybe a hundred things in this notebook. Then the chair, because by law you're responsible for identifying who speaks at meetings. The chair meets with the town administrator and takes out this hundred list of things that people wanna do on a, on a meeting, and it's completely your agenda. Pages, agenda. You really wanna bring it down to the things that you can give serious attention to, you know, thoroughly long discussions without, without being involved. So you have, you, you, you meet with the, with the town administrator, and you pick things. So like if, if, if the police chief has eight things on the agenda that he wants to do, it does make sense maybe to have a meeting that's just about the police chief and do all his items, so it only has to come once. But that's, that's a dialogue between you and the town administrator. Speaking of which, whoever is the chair, now speaking by every committee, saying for the planning board, or school committee, or whoever else. And you pick what items are ready for prime time and are ready to move forward, and what items more homework needs to be done. And maybe you wanna, we, we, you wanna counsel, to tell you what the law is, so you can attach a copy of the law, so you have that for the members and have in front of them. So as you go through the list of all the things that, that people want, you pick what you think that you can get done in a reasonable period of time, depending starting at seven, not to mind that maybe you aren't ending the meeting at ten or ten thirty. And in that period of time, how can you provide courtesy to the citizens and have the department, they still have to come back, repeatedly for the same thing. They're done, just, meeting one, they have to tell you what it is, and then meeting two, they have to come back and answer questions, and meeting three, all the homework has to be done. The same issue, you don't want to have, you have to come in three or four times. All that can be done in preparation for the meeting.
But if the meeting, if the boards are volunteers.
Yeah.
And you're ask, you're asking them to go enroll in things now, why do you need that there?
No, he's, he's saying opposite of that.
No, this is gonna make it so that isn't the case, that's what's happening right now.
So like the, so like the social media policy, keep talking about it.
We're not ready for it yet.
Right?
Yeah.
So his point is that I should be going through, working with Charlie to make sure that we have all the items ready to go forward before I put it on the table.
So that you don't have to please.
Yes.
They would be doing the reverse of that right now, we put a lot of things on the agenda, it's three pages, and we'll move that to next week, move that to next week, but we're still not, so.
Just putting more work on the chair.
And it makes it so that we have all the information about every single thing sitting in front of us. If Sandy wants to do something, you know, Sandy's very good about making sure we have what items and how much it's gonna cost and all that. But that's just an example, everything would be sitting in our packets, we'd have time to look at it, we're not walking in for a six thirty at night meeting that's gonna keep us in till eleven and going, oh, it's the first time I saw this, Sandy, hold on one second. It just makes it easier, and then I can say, oh, I did read this over the weekend, my question was this, and we can make a decision. Instead of, well, I feel like I didn't get enough time on this, so let's wait till the next meeting, and then Sandy's going, oh, great, so I have to wait now for two weeks until we meet, or right now we meet weekly, but two weeks until we pull this back on the agenda. Makes it easier for everybody. You guys don't have to come to multiple meetings, the boards don't have to come to multiple meetings.
But the key part of this, this, this meeting between the chair and the town administrator, that's always scheduled the same. So for example, there's one community that meets Wednesdays. And so every Thursday morning before that Wednesday, for at least thirty years, the chair of the board meets with the town administrator in the town administrator's office. And they decide on what's gonna be for the next agenda. What are they looking at for the agenda beyond that? What are they looking for, agenda after that? Kind of give people an idea that you won't be in for the next meeting, but we have you in for the meeting after that. And then it puts more work on the town administrator, so I'll probably get shot before I leave, but we will. But the, the, the idea is the town administrator then goes out and says, okay, so for the upcoming meeting, I know there's eight items on the agenda, and for those eight items to be successful, I have to invite people. So if some, if somebody's gonna be talking about what's going on with the fire department, make sure the fire chief's invited.
And the town council, because, you know, it always costs us money.
Yeah.
Right. Everything costs them.
So make sure the right people are invited, make sure the right documents are there.
Well, I feel like Charlie does that anyways, it almost make it easier to narrow down on a smaller list per time, so.
But the key part is, after the meeting, and after, after Charlie or the department has assembled what they think is relevant, they need to go to the select board well in advance to the meeting, so the members have a chance to be on top of the issue, you know what the issue is, before the meeting, so you know what questions to ask. That way you engage.
And well, usually like Tuesday afternoons, because a lot of times, you may be getting emails on things that are on the agenda, so people want that in to, so they'll put things in a pile, so I can get anything together, but then if there's a couple of things that committed, or things, or something that is on the agenda, or someone coming in, I kind of slip that back in. So I bring them upstairs, like quarter or four, because again, sometimes you have things up there in the town, up there, and forget stuff, so.
It'll be easier for you if you have a smaller agenda with more tipping point items.
Right, but as long as we don't have anything to, yeah, that's the problem.
Right.
If you don't add anything, it has to be.
Well, we shouldn't be adding anything, I think that's fair.
Yes, that's what we call a tipping point in that, so if something comes in and this, it's a major issue. A lot of, yes, you expect forty or fifty people to attend, it's controversial, and then you get an email that, that says, hey, we wanna change the color of the paint from, from white to, to off white. That's not a major, that's not a tipping point, but if somebody comes in and says, hey, we decided to re, redesign the project, it's gonna be entirely different. That's a tipping point, so you don't let them file amended project two hours before the meeting. It's not fair to the public who's coming, it's not fair to the board members. At that point, you reach the tipping point where the agenda item needs to be postponed. Needs to be removed off the agenda, go off to a future meeting. So as these, as these additional communications come in, the, the ones that are administrative and are, are minor, fine. But if they're major and they're substantive, that means the agenda needs to be changed. It needs to be taken off the agenda, so that those, those changes, that new design, that new project has a chance to be disseminated. Otherwise, you might have forty or fifty people come in and they discover they're talking, they're, they're objecting to the wrong project. That's not the project anymore. They've all wasted their time.
So.
You're not working on.
Yeah, so I'll work on Charlie on putting out a couple meetings, agendas ahead of time, so we don't keep just changing over and over again, causing more work, you guys. So those just pull things off, it doesn't take too much time. Um, so we have discussion of me for recording secretary.
Explain your best, cause you move further.
Also for the, the agendas and such, we had, obviously we had issues during last month, but we have conflicts. I was in the meeting, agenda was set up for those items, yeah. Gordon was one of the other members as a conflict for, but also, um, there was some question about actually setting up appointments and such, and what the board wanted to do in terms of that policy.
So I think if I have a conflict, and we have two members, we can work with that, it'll help each other.
Oh, yeah.
And how do you want to handle folks with the question of appointments? So I think the request for appointments should, if there's no conflict, go to the chair.
I think it's important to, I've been in some previous meetings, if they're asking for an appointment, you need to know why, have it written, you know, otherwise. I hate wasting people's time, I don't wanna give people the, the facade that they're gonna come in here, ask for an appointment, and just say, oh, because of, I want this. And then they show up, and they're like, okay, this is what I want, and they have nothing in writing, they have nothing that I were looking at, so I'm like, well, what you really should have done is maybe gone to zoning, or maybe gone to planning, and then come back here. I don't wanna give people the runaround, so if they give us an actual writing, this is what we would like to do. This is when, or we have an event, and we're gonna hold it outside this, this is when, these are the people who are licensed to do it. That way we can respond with the questions. I mean, is Charlie allowed to email us stuff like that before a meeting?
Yes.
And then we can respond just to you. So if there was somebody who wanted to do a wedding outside and wants to have a liquor, whatever, we could say, well, can you make sure you bring this with you to your appointment? That way we're not sending people away and wasting residents' time, board member's time, employee's time. So I think everything should be in writing, if they wanna come in for an appointment, it should be sent to the board previous. That way, if there is a question that maybe the resident needs to research, or bring with them, or find out the answer, they're not sitting in front of us going, well, why didn't you guys tell me before I came all the way down here seven thirty at night?
Sometimes people come to you first because you're the leaders of the town, but they're actually going to have a sequence.
Right.
Like we just talked about, for marijuana, for example, they should be doing a community outreach first, so the community has an opportunity to see. But marijuana business is all.
Before it comes to the HCA.
Before it comes to the board for the HCA. So there's, there's like a sequencing in the protocols, so maybe somebody needs to build a planning board first before they go to the board of appeals. Or maybe they need to go to the passivation commission, this is, the property's all underwater, before they go to the planning board. Let's see if it can be, can be built up.
Just more efficient, doesn't always people sign, or.
Right, but part, part of the point of the, the pre, the pre-meeting between the chair and town administrator is kind of stored out, so if there's something, just because somebody wants an appointment, doesn't mean that shouldn't be managed, to manage to, to be in the right sequence, manage to be, be, be of the wrong board. I was, I was at a town meeting, there were, there was a war article, and there was a discussion about whether or not the United States should pull out of Iraq, and they have this long discussion. And, and finally, the board said to me, counsel, is this within our jurisdiction? And I had to say, you have no jurisdiction over this issue. Well, the same thing, if somebody wants to come in and, and, and denounce, I don't know, Afghanistan or whatever, is that your issue? Is that your jurisdiction? This, these pre-meetings also make sure that people get steered to the right place.
Yeah, there is, that's what it is.
So, so is your legal service?
Oh, you have a form for that, correct?
Yes, I created a form, and I sent it along to you.
Okay.
The advantage of that is that, to use an, an example from the past, it was, not in this time, but there was an issue coming before the planning board in another town. And I had each member of the planning board reach out and wanting to spend an hour on the phone with me talking about that issue. So I ended up, there were five members of the planning board, and basically spent the whole day talking to individual members. Well, basically, all their questions were the same, they all had the same question. And if, if we had the form in place, they would have all gone to a central authority, maybe the, the chairman of the planning board could have filtered it out a little bit. Or the town administrator, or somebody, needs to say, hey, instead of asking counsel five times the same question, why don't we ask it once? And then have it distributed to the whole board.
Right.
And so it's, it's, it's logical for, if the planning board has a question or the project is coming in, the chairman of the planning board figures out what the, their board committee needs, and asks one question. What they, they one, at, at one time.
So this form would be, anybody who needs legal counsel would fill it out and submit it to her.
Well, that's, that's up to you, is to, to sort that out, how you, how you manage legal services. I have the sense that you don't have a system of management.
Right.
It's, I think they contacted, like, people just pick up the phone and contact you, and ask me to, to do things.
Right. So you would need to tell them they need to fill out their form for request for legal counsel, if they were to reach out to you.
Yes, but you need to decide who.
Who gets the forms?
Who get, who gets the forms, who processes the forms.
So should be the town administrator, or the chair of the board's department, or I guess any member of the board's department.
Have to go upon one person to do that, like a signature authority?
Well, also my, my fellow fact that, like, there only is different boards and committees, and one of the things I, I, I do wanna see is sort of centralizing, there's five members of the planning board, they're decentralized, so the chairs of these different boards. But they also might be in contradiction, so let's, we have, in another time, we have boards that actually sue each other, so you have like planning boards suing the board of appeals, and the board of appeals suing the planning board. So you don't want the planning boards being able to ask town council to prepare a complaint against the board of appeals, while the board of appeals asks town council to prepare a complaint against the planning board. All it needs to be filtered out by somebody, so some requests can be filtered out by the chairs of the committees, but there also needs to be somebody looking out for the towns.
Which.
They are, aren't they? The town administrator, I think the town administrator makes sense.
Well, I think it's where the issue is. I think that the issue is. I think for most things, it would be the town administrator. But I think a request for the members of the board would be fine as well. The, the members of the board can speak with the town administrator, that would be the issue. So, I would think it would be up to the board members, or the select members of the board, and the town administrator. But it'd be up to the board to make sure that discussing the issue. Would be the town administrator to say that I authorized X to talk to legal services over this issue.
Right, I get phone calls from employees of the town to my cell phone saying, hey, do you mind if I call call? I have to ask blah, 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 blah. I'm like, uh, so that's where that comes in.
So remember, number one, it costs money.
Right.
Number two, they may be contradicting each other.
Right.
So there may be, there may be something that the town is facing that involves policy decisions. When they, they call counsel, someone says, let's, what can I do to oppose this project? But the select board is in favor of the project. But the select board is in favor of the project. Would I then be undermining the board by, by arming the opposition with all the reasons why the project shouldn't go forward when when you all want the project to go forward? There needs to be.
So how do the other towns handle your form? Cause I know other towns do it.
Generally, it's signed by the town administrator. And the town administrator consults with the select board.
So that could be something you guys can do in your meetings once a week, is if there's any
or if there's something more immediate to contact with them.
Right. And then you guys can decide that together. So can we get that form sent out to all the department heads and departments and committees that come here out? If there's any legal services needed, it needs to be filled out and sent back to you and maybe coffee order, however you want to handle that, Charlie, do, and then you can send it to Gordon.
But just to use an example, it's like with marijuana, which is often controversial. So let's say the board is in favor of marijuana establishment of a particular location. Where a particular board is absolutely opposed to it, and they want my advice on how to kill this project. I don't want to be in the middle of that. So if they fill out the form, if you're the Charlie, then he's, but he's in a better position to sort that out. Because he can talk to the select board. You all have to be on the same page, because somebody, when you're dealing with third parties, they're gonna sue the town. And you've got different boards taking different positions, and you have councils giving advice to those in favor and those opposed to the project. It's a mess.
It's a mess, but also if you're playing around in a different mess, let's say there's a year, the planning board is disagreeing with the board's like the most policies you can talk about. And the board says, sorry, we're not gonna allow you to respond to this issue. Well, you're left there on the low advice, which increases the chance that they will make an error. How are you handling that? Which increases, as you mentioned, a lot of our losses. So I think there's an obligation by the town that we provide those boards and committees with quick legal advice. I understand that you may have lost my agreements, but it's part of how we operate. Is there going to be times when there are policy disagreements? And it'll happen before, it'll happen again. But I think it's far worse not to provide guidance to those boards and committees, even if there is a policy disagreement.
Yes, I would think back on that by saying, it depends on the question asked. So if the ZDA is opposed to something that the select board is doing, the whole thing they want from counsel is, how many days do we have from the data filing to the day we have to make a decision? That's not.
Right.
But if they call and they say, you know, tell us how we kill this project, come up with some ideas. That's, that's a different request.
Well, or, but I was agreeing to give them advice, I would just say, and I can't help you about killing a project. Here are the criteria you need to use to make a decision is a slightly different spin on it. You're still providing good advice to them. You're not, however, giving them a step-by-step. Here are the three things you, I know I will review this, here are the three things that are weaknesses in this project, collab with those. It's, here's the procedure for making a decision, here are the criteria you need to use.
Excuse me? I'm elected board, board of trustees, if they choose to defend ATB here, I would have to get your permission, is that all right?
Well, that's always the case.
Okay, but I always, I always go to you, right?
No, you won't. You will be, but you'll be, you'll be going, you'll sign the form. We'll send it to the board, board will still need the decision about that.
So everything has to go to the board? Or can you just talk to board and then yeah, that's it?
Well, in some cases, in some cases, it will just be Gordon. Something like the ATB case, where the town has to make an actual decision whether to defend the case. So the board has to make that decision.
Okay, and that's always happening?
Yeah, that's not always.
But you all expose, you know, we, you know, guidance on a, something that isn't an ATB case yet, bless us. It's a different.
Next up is discussion, move for recordings and the territory for select.
Um, Kevin, I agree.
I gave more, I am the one that's, there should be another one also that I.
So luckily, a couple of other communities in Massachusetts during the last year or so, already going out, they got some information. Some towns do it on a per-meeting basis, just a flat rate, you get a hundred dollars, a hundred fifty dollars for doing their minutes for meetings, those are around per-hour rate. There's a variety of responses there, that is an idea. Linda, Cole asked me whether in fact a position could be established at this time, since we don't have town meeting. As long as the money is available, you can. There's provision in the wage and personnel bylaw that allows, what was the wage and personnel board, which would now be expanded more so. To, on a temporary basis, establish a new position with particular grade slots, where you're great. So then, if it's going to be permanent, it has to be ratified at a town meeting. But if for some reason this month, next month, you said, yeah, we need to get this done, and the money was available one way or the other, then you're able to do that.
So I guess right now, because we've been having more than two meetings a month, that's why it's the need for this.
Not just that, but the increase of the work and the hours, it's increased over all the years since then. It's like, it's not that I just, I know that when I've did it, you actually close your door, oh yeah, do you need it at all? I'm not, I'm not gonna do that because it just doesn't matter, because then the doors just wanna fly off with the arms off, and our message is only to me. I like to kind of like say, if someone comes in after a minute, I will do whatever you need to do. Because sometimes it's like five or 10 minutes. But not just that, but just like when we share the cars and people can be placed, they come in to me for that. I don't mind doing it, but glad it's taken away. And the meetings have been since May, I can have them once or so a week. And you know, a lot is.
You want to hang out with us?
Well, can you walk me up, you know, you know, you know, part of that, and then you guys get a lot of like interviewing and like finding us. And that takes a lot of time. I mean, granted, you know, you tried to like, you know, throw up on the hot seat, but you know what, sometimes you do that. Like you guys, people like to speak to you. What, three people, four people? I mean, those minutes that I kind of want to get into to all of those, that's why I'm like.
So at some point, we'll bring back this on 26, but at some point, if you want to move forward this, probably either you're gonna do it as an ungraded position, but probably a stipend, which you're just gonna need. Or on a per-hour basis, you can do it per-hour basis as a flat, no, no, no multiple steps, not the ungraded. Or it's probably gonna be a grade two position.
Sandy, can I ask you a question? Linda does finance, banking finance, right?
Linda actually is the finance committee secretary. She doesn't just do the.
Is there anyone else? I feel like if I would use this, I would.
Other than that, was school?
The student's school.
The school has a, just a.
We have our employees that are.
Um, I, but.
Awesome.
Linda handles all the course classes.
Yeah, Linda does, um, it's all weird. She does research for the little stuff, so I think she does a bit more. She's actually scheduled five hours a week.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. Um, she's scheduled five hours a week. And, you know, some weeks she doesn't have hours and some weeks she has more than five hours, but that's how we do it, that's how we budget it.
So in my town, particularly with its COVID business, every noise virtual meeting, so we just put a I was gonna ask somebody if you watched these virtual meetings, like prepare beds, basically stay at home, prepare the beds. Had some people who were stay-at-home, who were working from home anyway. We picked actually more than one. So we had somebody doing some boards, somebody else doing some other boards. And it got done, it was a huge relief to the, the Florida select board staff. Frankly, they weren't having fun doing these, but it's not there where they want to be at. And if it gets planned somewhere, would they?
So I guess, speaking after all this discussion, would you, to present a recommendation of the next meeting? Also bring to the finance committee for the 24th, Sandy, I guess, before that, it's recommended finance.
I think if we're gonna let them do it from our.
We'll only have reserve fund.
Yeah, I think that's really the only thing we can do at this point, is just sort of find.
Okay, falls under the audit system.
So I think if you guys can put it for the sort.
You guys should do it per meeting.
Maybe, but on the meetings.
I, I guess that that would be their recommendation, wasn't it, how they come back in and how will you rate or per meeting rate for me? I would guess if we have a three-hour meeting, it's gonna be a costly if we have a twelve-hour.
Okay.
Well, last time we told them, you didn't sign up for that.
Discussion on the natural opioid settlement, filing of documents, part of settlement offer.
Right, so Paul's heard it, obviously he's notifying us about this, but also about the announcements from the association as it's beginning it. What it requires for them to have any interest, it doesn't mean we've signed up the settlement, but the first step is through order to register us as a participant in this. And then between now and the end of January, to make, review the filings and settlement office, which I think that's a lot of it, through the ATB's office. And then for, it's January 2nd, make a decision whether to apply the settlement.
Okay, so I guess, I missed the most, I missed the name of the document.
Do you have the note? Will you go over that?
At least get us registered and start.
Registered?
Yes.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Uh, social media policy is the next item, but I don't want Troy to hear that. And I would say the same for the town officials policy.
Actually, I don't know what.
So I spoke with Jack. I can send it to you, Charlie, you can send it to me.
Just more like code of conduct type of thing?
Yeah, it's a similar, it's something that we worked with with a couple of different other towns, including Foxborough. Standards of conduct, stability policy.
Is there anything else?
Well, so the 15-year rate for.
So, so I, I spoke with Mr. Parsons. I tested Troy and Ashley and asked them if eight thirty on 10/23 worked, any response from Ashley, but I don't think Troy responded. Yeah, Troy did not respond.
Or are we planning on Saturday or not planning on Saturday?
I, if Troy says no, I'd like to find a time that works for all three of us to do that.
Well, we might have to talk to them on our free, with the weekday, I think, I don't think that I. Hey Troy, we're just talking about you. This, this Saturday at eight thirty work free, for the, what, the.
Seven fifteen, no, Plinestreet for the review.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, it's okay.
But would the site visit for October twenty, for the Saturday eight thirty work?
There's anything.
One, I have a question for Troy.
Well, wait, I think that was the last thing I had on my agenda.
Can we just ask like about that town officials policy or what your question will amount?
It's not, it's not a question, we don't have one. It's to hold, what's a better way to describe this? Jack's.
Who is Jack?
Jack Dolan is, what's his favorite?
He works as a first-line personnel. The labor personnel.
So something you've already been talking to council about, and what is the idea?
It's something that Jack brought to me when I met with him a couple of weeks ago.
So way back like a year or two ago, I'm on the
Thank you.
Director, Senator, Mass municipal association, and we're getting all this feedback from members about how to deal with somebody who's abusive at meetings.
Was there an, tangibles or officials?
Well, and and it, it, we spent a lot of time and effort then trying to figure out, the, this Mass municipal association adopted a civility policy intended to be guidance on this subject matters. What to do, so if somebody's here yelling at the board, what is the board supposed to do? And we've seen, we've seen meetings where somebody gets up and calls board members racist and pigs and things like that in the heat of the moment. We've seen, I don't know, board members lose their temper and start yelling at citizens. And in one situation, the board shut down public comment and refused to allow more public comment, that's just too.
I didn't know whether it was a complaint against the town officials here or what was it.
No, it was an accountability thing. And the reason it was brought to our attention was because the, all the complaints that had happened previously.
Yeah, cause I did see, um, in Beacon, the city council had a meeting on this, on the Sibel, and of this.
But as Paul's mentioned, you should have a code of conduct, both for town officials or to committees that they act, whether it's on themselves, but also with residents and needs, the place versus.
But also for the residents, yes.
And we're finding that, I think because of the COVID-19 situation and maybe because of the pandemic, it just, each nation, their short temper. There isn't the same kind of civility that we saw 10 or 15 years ago. It's just, everybody seems to be, short fuse is, not everybody, that's. A lot of people are on short fuse. And then that has the effect of disrupting the meeting. Whether it happens from the audience or whether it happens from the board, the government work doesn't get done, it gets distracted. So how do you handle it? Part of the procedure is to encourage everybody to be civil and so on, but also to set up some mechanisms, have to be on, on every level. So if there's a board member that's out of control, there's a method there for the other board members to work with that board member. If it's a member of the public, what do you do about that? Because if somebody's lost their temper and is using full-out words and all that kind of stuff, whether the audience or the board level, this thing that we recommend, like recess to me, me and like, before you call the cops, have somebody dragged out of the meeting. Just do a recess, let everybody cool off, and then all kinds of guidelines and. And it's generic, it's not, it's not.
This wasn't.
House effects, nothing to do with house effects.
I've seen, I think I even announced it in my calendar, keep up with the recommendations.
Or lots of back to a policy and procedures and holding accountability for that.
Good.
Can we run the executive session?
Yeah.
We need to do this for contract negotiation.
Yeah, the one thing on the next unit.
Okay.
And then I can give you an update on this board as well.
If you wanted to.
I didn't speak with the board yet.
Okay, so now sorry, it's going to go into negotiations today.
Well, negotiations, I mean, you don't have a lot.
Yeah. So I'm wishing to go through executive session for the investigation.
So I can do it.
I agree with that whole thing, sorry, I stopped myself. So executive session to meet with town council and executive session pursuant to master on the launch chapter 38, sections 21A, section five and subject construction for the DCA on 449 MATH, form 44, 2007 to discuss investigation of charges of criminal misconduct or consideration of the filing of criminal complaints and contract negotiations for mixed unit is discussed strategy to respect to collective bargaining. In an open meeting, you may have detrimental effect on bargaining position to the town. You will not come back for any more business, but you will retire from executive session.
So Paul, it's a good question.